Good evening, folks. I'm calling this hearing together of the Policy Personnel and Appointments Committee to gather this evening. We're going to have two hearings this evening, and then there will be another tomorrow evening. I would ask for purposes of establishing a quorum that the clerk call to roll.
Ammons, Gladney.
Here.
Hunt, Knott.
Here.
McGinty.
Here.
Nudo.
Here.
Schrader.
Wyble.
Here.
Betts.
Here. There is a quorum. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda and any addendum that may exist.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. McGinty. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Nudo. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Motion carries. I'm slightly out of order because we have public participation toward the last, and if the committee will indulge me, we have one person who needs to leave fairly quickly this evening. If we could take one person out of order, and if anyone else wants to be taken out of order, I would obviously honor that. Is there any objection to that? Hearing none. Representative Naomi Jacobson.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing me to come before you this evening, being on the other side of making a presentation. I come in support of keeping the elected Recorder's Office, keeping the Recorder's Office as an elected office. As most of you know and are aware, the Recorder's Office is the office where there's a permanent public record of all of the real estate transactions in the county. In addition, there are several other kinds of documents there, and I'm sure that Recorder Frasca is going to expound on that. But from my experience, I really believe that the Recorder's Office is one of the most publicly-used offices in the county. People come in to check their real estate records, they come in to look up various kinds of documents, veterans come in to file and then get certified copies of their service papers, there's a particular number form called DD-214s. And it's the recorder who is responsible not only to the public who comes in and uses the office, the recorder is responsible to the citizens of the county. And the recorder knows the needs, I think more than anyone else, of the consumers of the office. The recorder deals with attorneys, title company representatives, the general public, and many other people who come in to work in the office. The recorder is the one who understands what it is, the kinds of documents that the people need to have access to, how they need to have that access, and provide the best environment for that work to happen. And it's the recorder who makes the decision on the equipment in the office and the personnel and, I believe, is the right one to make those decisions because, again, it is the recorder who works with the public, it's the recorder then who is responsible to the public. And I would like to add, I believe, and certainly as I stand here, I had been the county recorder for 12 years before Recorder Frasca. This is not a partisan issue, it's not a personnel issue, it's a matter of it being a public office, and therefore it should be a public elected official. Thank you very much for your indulgence in letting me speak first because I do have other things on my calendar tonight.
Thank you, Naomi. So that people understand I'm not showing favoritism, I have three other people who wish to speak, and certainly there's still forums there if you wish to speak. If people would wish to speak now, I would indulge it, or we can have it after the recorder makes her presentation. So if one of you who has signed up wants to speak now, raise your hand, and I will take you out of order. Thank you. Seeing that no one wishes to speak, I am going to extricate myself from this position and have Barbara conduct her presentation, and I will be over here.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for coming. Bear with me a little bit, this is my first PowerPoint. My two daughters learned how to do it, I think, at the ages of four and five, but unfortunately it's taken me a little while longer to get around to that point. I did have a program at the front, it has a purple cover with a cute little dog on the front, just because I like cute little dogs. The first several pages are letters that have been sent by people that work with title companies, attorneys, surveyors, so if you want to take some time to look through those, that's fine. If you move past those, I believe maybe it's the first, I don't know, 15 pages, you can follow along with the PowerPoint as I go along. Please feel free, if you have any questions whatsoever, if I skip anything, if I'm moving too fast, please stop me, and I'm sure somebody can help me figure out how to go back. So let me get this up and started. Your past and your future, the Champaign County Recorder's Office. The Recorder of Deeds Office is one of the oldest offices known to mankind. It was actually, the groundwork was set by the Magna Carta back in the mid-1200s during the time of Henry VIII, and he did it in order to protect the chain of title of his property, which at that time had moved from father to son, and as we all kind of know the history, he didn't necessarily want his property to go from father to daughter. So that's when the Magna Carta was originally started, and it set up the groundwork for keeping track of property rights and property ownership. Champaign County Recorder's Office maintains documents back to the year 1833, which is slightly before the county was actually, became a county. Winston Churchill said, "Here is a law which is above the king and which even he must not break. This reaffirmation of a supreme law and its expression in a general charter is the great work of Magna Carta, and this alone justifies the respect in which men have held it." Which means to me the fact that the Magna Carta and now our property laws protect us so that no one has the right to come in and take our property or usurp our property rights. There's a book called The Mystery of Capital by Hernando de Soto, which is incredibly dry, but it has some very important parts which I've kind of pulled from it. And basically, the whole point behind the book is that Third World countries can never seem to succeed because of the fact that they do not have any specific form of land ownership and land documentation. They have houses but not titles, crops but not deeds. It is the unavailability of these essential representations that explains why people who have adopted every other Western invention, from the paperclip to the nuclear reactor, have not been able to produce sufficient capital to make their domestic market economy work. Basically, if you want to borrow money to buy a house, if you want to borrow money to buy a cow, if you want to borrow money to start a business, you need to be able to prove land ownership, and that's one of the problems that still plagues the Third World. The basis of a market economy is capital, and the basis of capital as an economic tool is rational property law. Without a complex system to delineate and protect rightful ownership, capital is dead. It cannot be used for a mortgage, lenders and investors have no certainty of ownership beyond the moment. So actually, the Recorder of Deeds Office is probably one of the most important county offices that we have because it touches every single person that lives in Champaign County, whether you actually own property or not. Rent property, if you're buying property on contract, all those different types of things need to be kept track of. As an example, it takes 77 bureaucratic procedures, 31 agencies, in five to 14 years to acquire a piece of land in Egypt, with no guarantee that the deed will not be revoked by the next ministry to process the paperwork. And I think that this also speaks well to the reason why it's very important that we have an elected official, because an elected official is elected by all the people within the county, not chosen by a certain few. And when everyone in the county has a say in how that person runs the office, that lends us a certain type of safety net to prevent things like this from happening. Question, do you want the important office which safeguards your property chosen by government bureaucrats or elected and responsible to you? Our mission statement within the Recorder's Office is the accurate and efficient recording and indexing of land records and miscellaneous documents within Champaign County, to act as a protector of your most important resource, your real property, to also provide prompt and courteous service to you, the electorate, as well as providing a helping hand whenever needed. That was my goal when I ran for office in 1996, to make our office one of the most helpful and easy-to-use offices within not only central Illinois but the state of Illinois. What we do, we record over 300 different types of documents. Many documents have different statutory requirements. We must be able to quickly understand and know how to correctly index documents. These documents are recorded, scanned, indexed, microfilmed, and returned. We record on average 35,000 documents per year, at an average of 10 pages per document, that equals about 350,000 pages per year that we must keep track of and are able to find and reproduce at a moment's notice, forever. Whenever a document is recorded in our office, it's kept forever. So if you want to find a page of a deed from 1842, we need to be able to find that page and make a copy of it for you. We help protect your property. We protect the chain of title for real property. If you want to sell your home, if you want to take a mortgage out on your home, we help protect your chain of title, keep lien holders from filing false liens. We record and protect your real estate documents, deeds, mortgages, assignments, and releases. We safeguard these documents and make them available for public notice and inspection. Unlike the documents within the county clerk's office, our records are all covered by the Freedom of Information Act. The only exclusion are the DD-214, the military discharge records. Those have been blocked because they do carry social security numbers on them. You may see a little card that I laid around, it looks like this little green and blue card. We do have a new program that I'm going to talk about a little bit later, and it's Property Fraud Alert. It's free to every person in Champaign County. We will help you sign up, it's a very simple matter. What happens is that if anybody comes in to file a document against your property, a deed, a quitclaim deed, a mortgage, you will be notified, however you want it set up, by mail, by email, by phone, so that you will know if somebody is filing something The history of our records. The records held within our vault showcase the latest and best means of record-keeping within any timeframe in our history. Books which hold original documents from 1833 to 1975, microfilmed images from 1975 to 1985, and digital images from then forward. And I have brought some of the books for you to kind of get an idea of what we have. Book is the original survey record when the original government layer came around and laid out the townships and the tracts within Champaign County. I believe it's [inaudible] 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 So that's one of our oldest books. We have some other types of books. You'll see a few images of our soldiers' discharge records. We maintain our soldiers' discharge records back to the beginning of the county, which includes Soldier Discharge Paper, Civil War, which is one of the books that I brought. [inaudible] 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 Now that we have a lot of surveyors that feel very strongly about our plat books, and we recently undertook a huge project because our plat books are kind of getting in bad shape. They get a lot of use still, a lot of people come in, look at them, what copies of them when they put in here. Some of them were taped down, some were stapled down. Really getting in bad shape. So what I did was I found some [inaudible] 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 So we have lots and lots of different things besides just deeds in our office. What we're working on now, too, is we're working on, for so long, everything was kept in books, and then somebody said, "Uh-oh, these books are big and the space is limited, so let's start putting things on microfilm." And microfilm is good, but it's kind of a pain in the neck because you have to find the right microfilm, you have to put it on a machine, you have to focus it, you have to print it. And then the computers came around, and now things are digital. So what we're doing now is we're going back and digitizing all the old microfilm. And at the point that that's over, then we'll begin digitizing the old books as well. But right now, we're at a 30-year mark, and for those people that are title searchers, that's kind of a big mark, a 30-year search. A lot of times, it's a search that they're required to do, so it's made it a lot easier for them. And as long as those images are digitized, then they can look them up on the computer. Okay, "Did You Know You Could Find: Records painstakingly stored within large leather-bound books filled with the flowing and often poetic language of our forefathers." We actually did have some Lincoln Papers in our books, which the state archives came and took away. There may be others that we just haven't come across at this point. We have books documenting the original government tracts laid out throughout our state, which is the ones that you just saw.
[inaudible]
Yeah.
You just said they took it away. Now that implies something else. These are our records and the state's records.
They were our records, they left us copies, and they took the originals. And that was done probably 25 years ago. Okay? I can check into it.
I'm just curious.
Yeah. And that's kind of what they've done all through the state. If you come across anything with Lincoln's name on it, they come and grab it.
It's a Lincoln Squad.
Military discharge papers from the Civil War forward, from times of peace and times of conflict. And, oh, I thought I brought a stallion book, didn't I? Did I miss one? Well, I must, no, that was the, I must not have brought it. We also have books where you could record your prized stallions, you know, who the father was, the sire and the mayor, and there was a legal record of the thoroughbreds. People also would name their homesteads, their farmlands, they would give them names. So we also have those books. And there you just see what one of the soldier's discharge papers looks like. What is recording? Any document can be recorded if it meets strict statutory requirements, and we've had some LULUs, you know, but if somebody brings something in and it meets all state requirements, then we have to record it. One was for a patent of a new type of paperclip, and they didn't want anybody else to beat them, so it's now recorded there for history. Document is checked to make sure it meets all state and local statutes, the fee is configured, preliminary indexing information is entered, and a document is stamped, the fee is collected, and it's broken down into 15 possible funds. I think our office has more funds than any other office possibly than the Circuit Clerk's A document is scanned, and the image is electronically matched to the indexing information. So the minute you put in someone's name and you see the document, you click on the button and you'll see the document image immediately. The document is returned to the customer at the time that they record it, or if they don't want to wait a couple extra minutes, we'll mail it back. When I first took office, the return time for a document was six weeks. Now we can hand it right back. Documents are then completely indexed, the indexing information is verified for accuracy, the microfilm is created off-site using the scanned image, and the document information and image is available immediately to users. So those companies, the title companies, the law firms that are online with us, the minute we hit the record button at the counter and record that document, they can then see that information back at their office. Wait. What about electronic recording? Electronic recording, we were one of the first counties in the state to record documents electronically. Actually, we were the second. DuPage was the first, and so we're pretty proud of that. What is electronic recording? Instead of sending a document or hand carrying a document, say you have a mortgage that you want to record, and you're with Chicago Title, and so you give the mortgage to a runner, and he goes out, and he gets in his car, and he drives over here, and he parks, and he walks in, and we check the document, and, oh, no, they didn't notarize it. So he goes back out, and he gets in his car, and he drives back to Chicago Title, and he goes in, and he gets it notarized, and he gets back in his car, and he drives back over here, and he comes in, and he records it, and then he takes the document home. Well, with electronic recording, all they have to do is scan the document into an ordinary scanner in their office, fill in a few brief information on it, click a button, it immediately comes to us, we check it, if everything's okay, we click a button, it's recorded, it goes right back to them, it's already scanned into our system, it's partly indexed. If there's something wrong with it, we click a button, send it back, they correct it, and click it back again. So it's literally like 30 seconds, you know, as opposed to maybe an hour or an hour and a half of someone's time. The benefits of e-recording. Images are sent electronically, saving paper, postage, fuel, and time. Documents are recorded by a simple mouse click. Recorded document is immediately kicked back to the sender, and no need to scan the document, the image is already in the system. It's kind of the new Greenway. No envelopes, no transportation costs, images are recorded and returned electronically. If there are errors, documents are returned electronically versus by mail, and it speeds up the ability to purchase, finance, or refinance property. Then the next probably five years, you won't even see big mortgage packages anymore. There'll be a template, you'll sign the template, and it'll come to us. And instead of 15 pages, it'll be one page. So everything's kind of moving in that direction.
But what good backup do you have for this system if it's saying it can crash? Is there a backup?
We have three different backups. We have two backups here through IT. And we also have an off-site backup in Rock Island. So we actually have three different and separate backups. But I worry about that a lot, especially during tornado season, yeah. Some more advancements. We've done back indexing in images. We've done back imaging from 1991 to 1975 and back indexing to 1986. We've got the Property Fraud Alert Program, which is a little card that I gave you. It's free of charge. It's easy to sign up. You just, you can call us, you can stop in the office, you can go on our website. All it requires is your name and how you want to be contacted. And we also, we're one of the first counties to start doing social security redaction, which is now becoming state law, that we have to redact social security numbers out of documents. Don't ever put your social security number on a document, a mortgage or anything else. So we have software that does that. We also then every week go back and recheck those documents to make sure that the software didn't miss any. Restoration and digitization of Platts. And I showed you when I talked about the Platt books. And up there, you actually see one of the Platts that they photographed. And you can see how clear it is, how legible it is. One of the big complaints that I had when I first took office was from the surveyors that they could not read the Platts because there was no way for huge 24-by-36 Platts to be filmed or scanned as one piece. So what they did was they broke them up into separate little pieces. And then you had to print them out and kind of glue them all together. So it was onsite restoration. None of the books had to leave. The project was completed within two months. Ease of copying, they can do it themselves at the public terminal, we don't have to do it for them. It saves us time and them time, and it protects the quality of the old books. Documents are recorded and returned immediately. We have a new barcode scanning system to prevent errors. And what it is, when we run the document through the printer, it puts the document number, the number of pages, all that information. It also puts a barcode. So that when it runs through the scanner, the scanner automatically assigns it the correct document number. And say, the document was 16 pages and the scanner only scanned 15, it comes up with a warning and says, you need to check this, there's a page missing. We have an internet subscription service, which we make quite a bit of money off of. It goes from $75 a month to $400 a month. Chicago Title is one of our biggest users. They've purchased two internet subscriptions. They pay us $800 a month to use the internet service. Electronic recording has helped immensely with our workload. Customer work, oh, I have a little typo here that I didn't catch. We've set up a work area for our searchers and we're working on getting wireless internet service so they can use their laptops while they're there, so that they don't have to leave and then come back and leave and come back. We've streamlined document numbering systems and the scanning of all documents. When I first came, some documents were image, you could pull them up on the computer, others you had to go and pull files. Now everything is scanned and everything can be accessed from the computer. Advancements like this take an incredible investment of time, knowledge, and energy. New advancements are happening all the time, which save the county time, manpower, and money. These often require statute changes, information sharing, and technology implementation and training. A recorder's duty extends beyond the office. Recorders must be available to serve on many different panels and committees in order to best serve the needs of their constituents, guarding the revenue stream from the grasp of legislatures and secretaries of state. When I first started, the secretary of state had just taken over something, if you're a farmer, you're probably familiar with UCC's Uniform Commercial Codes. They had just come in and taken almost all of those away from us. And we went from doing, it was like we did 19,000 of them a year, and now we do maybe 1,500. So that, and each one was $33. So that was a huge revenue stream that we lost. Incorporating new policies and laws to protect the people of Champaign County, following nationwide trends to run a proactive office to try and stay in front of fraud, to try and always be on the cutting edge of new technology. I put in here some of the duties of the county clerk because I know that there are some people who think that possibly a good idea is to combine the recorder's office with the county clerk's office. So I thought it would be interesting to see some of the things the county clerk does. Elections, voter registration, vital records. Assume-name businesses, taxes. More taxing, including property tax extension information, certificates of purchase and More taxing duties, property tax extension information, certificates of purchase and redemption, statement of economic interest, notary public. Does the county clerk's office have anything to do with the recorder's office? County clerk as recorder. That's a statute number, if any of you care to look it up for a little light reading tonight. But basically, it says that the county clerk in counties having a population of less than 60,000 inhabitants shall be the recorder in his county. That doesn't mean that what we as recorders do and what Mark as county clerk does have anything whatsoever in common. It's just in smaller counties, there is still some small counties such as Bond County, I love Bond County, they have a cigar box that they keep, they're recording money in every day. So in smaller counties, there's just not a lot of workload. So it's possible for them to do the two separate jobs. There are 102 counties in the state of Illinois, and only one county, DeKalb, has a combined county clerk and recorder. DeKalb County has a population of 106,321. I know I'm running late, I'm sorry. Similar-sized counties to Champaign, Sangamon County has an elected recorder, Peoria County has an elected recorder, McLean County has an elected recorder, Rock Island County has an elected recorder, Tazewell County has an elected recorder. County clerk and recorder's offices are combined in smaller counties due to the smaller workloads for each office. When counties surpass the 60,000-person mark, they can opt to separate the offices, they do not have to. Two counties larger than 60,000 have combined offices. DeKalb County opted at 60,000 to keep the offices combined. And Adams County, for political purpose, purposes, their county clerk went to jail, they chose to combine the offices. I know that won't happen here. The smaller the county, the less a workload for both offices and the easier it is for both jobs to be incorporated. The county clerk's main concern will always be elections, not recording. It would make more sense to combine other offices with the recorder's office. There is another nice statute number. In counties of less than a million pursuant to resolution or ordinance of the county board, may establish a parcel numbering system, which we currently have and is done by the supervisor of assessments, to be monitored by the recorder. So instead of having a referendum to change the recorder from elected to appointed, we can simply have an ordinance by the county board moving the parcel numbering system to the recorder's office. Also, along the same line, we can have the recorder establish a map-making department, currently done by the supervisor of assessments and the GIS. And that as well can be done by ordinance or resolution as opposed to referendum. The benefits. Both of these changes can be made by county board resolution or ordinance versus the cost of an election. According to statute, the county board can, by resolution or ordinance, move the parcel and map-making duties of the S of A and GIS departments to the recorder, no referendum required. I'm not saying I necessarily want them, but you can move them there. My office is a moneymaker for the county. We take in anywhere from $5,000 to over $50,000 in revenue per day. We collect a $3 per document automation fee. This fee pays for all of our computerization and much of our employee costs. We collect a $10 per document GIS fee, which supports the GIS consortium. We collect a $10 rental housing support fee, which the county keeps $1 with $9 being submitted to the state. We have a very aggressive internet program, which I already mentioned, ranging from $75 to $400 per month. We have an aggressive copy charge and billing system, which allows copies to be automatically charged and prevent theft. Our office is dramatically understaffed as compared to other comparable counties. We monitor escrow, ACH, and charge accounts on a daily basis with billing done monthly. And our accounting system is complex, with up to 15 funds, and yet is monitored myself and my chief deputy. Here, this just shows a general corp fund. You'll see the revenue in the dark blue, the expenditure in the light blue. And then our automation, same thing, revenue in the dark blue, expenditure in the light blue. And you'd see as, as things have tightened up with the county, I've been more than happy to move more and more of my expenses to my automation fund. And you can see that it's kind of catching up with me now. Will it save space? Not likely. The needs and setup of the recorder's office means that our office could not easily be moved. The vault holds over 2,000 large leather-bound books, microfilm records, and Platts. It's a concrete fire-resistant area in order to protect the delicate books and records within. And we need a large area for public search terminals as well as counters for recording and questions. Conclusions, finally here. Ours is one of the most technically advanced offices within the state and beyond. We perform on a relatively small budget with very few employees. Many of our expenses are self-funded from a statute-based automation fund. The Recorder of Deeds office is one of the oldest elected positions and one of the most important. We safeguard your most valuable possession, your home and land. You have the right to increase the recorder's office by an ordinance or resolution, whereas to incorporate it with the county clerk requires a referendum. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you, Barb. Actually, we're going to have public participation and then we'll...
Sure.
Thank you very, very much. That was a very, very presentation.
It went over my time, I'm sorry.
No one's keeping track.
[laughing].
We do have some folks signed up for public comment this evening. And you can come up here and state your name so that the recorder can put it into the record. Rex Bradfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Rex Brad, excuse me, I'm Rex Bradfield. I live at 2101 Pond Street in Urbana, Illinois. I have resided in this area since 1966 and lived on Pond Street since 1973. I've enjoyed providing professional engineering and land surveying services to the general public since 1978. In order to effectively provide those professional services, I was required to seek assistance with research concerning records, Platts, easements, deeds, and other many legal documents from the Champaign County Recorder of Deeds. Although there have been many recorders during that 36-year period, most of my experience was with Naomi Jacobson and Barb Frasca. Both were elected. Now, to my utter disgust and belief, I find that because Champaign County has an auditor who's defrauding the general public out of his salary by simply disregarding reasonable commitment to the public, the county board has chosen to scrutinize that office and other elected public offices such as recorder and the coroner under the thinly veiled pretense of making government better because elected board members are more qualified to determine public servants than the public themselves. I completely agree, there's a problem with the auditor's office and it should be corrected yesterday. But for the county board to suggest that the other two offices are necessary for any political review because of performance, cost, or efficiency is simply illoginous. Just as it makes no difference to the general public if the auditor is a Democrat, Republican, Green, or independent political member, it also makes no difference of the coroner or the Recorder's party affiliation as long as the office is being run efficiently and frugally and serves the neater, needs of the public. A previous recorder ran the office of the recorder so ineffectively as to cause surveyors not even to bother going into that office, but rather to request the title companies to pull the documents from their files. In fact, the office rule was posted in the form of a cartoon right before the public eyes. What part of "no" don't you understand? Even such disregard for friendly public service did not precipitate the county board to consider the actions which are being considered by these hearings. The public just didn't elect that recorder again. Over her elected terms, Barb Frasca has molded that office into a model of efficiency and friendly, helpful public service. She has done so with a frugal budget, friendly, efficient staff, and not received any negative press over her terms. She has not only performed professionally, but she has convinced the public of her merits and has been reelected repeatedly. You seek to reward her and the general public by suggesting you know more about effective government operations and would appoint someone who would better serve the public. Your ability to manage even the most simple of construction projects certainly belies your ability to appoint good management. It disgusts me that the county board would even entertain this temptation just to avoid not paying a worthless public servant in another office because it might be of a particular party affiliation. Matter of fact, I'm going to go outside the city and apply for a vendor's license just to sell toilet paper hats outside the county board chambers because there's no doubt where they had their heads when they even considered these hearings. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a hearing regarding the Recorder of Deeds office. Let me inform the public. There is no motion before this body to abolish this office, the auditor's office, or the coroner's office. That motion does not exist. It has never been placed on the table. These are hearings that have been periodically held. It is not the first time they have been held. They have been held under Republican administrations and under Democratic administrations. I want people to be informed of that fact. This is my third time on this board in which these hearings have been held over the years. It's been under both parties. So I think we should stick to the question of whether or not the offices should be elective offices, not into whether the particular office holder is doing a good job or not. John Farney.
My name's John Farney. I live at 2504 East Florida in Urbana. First, let me say that I am here to support keeping all three offices that you are considering over the next two days as elected offices. I feel very strongly that it is very important that the public have the right to choose the people that run their government. The direct election of the people that hold these offices is something that I, one of my beliefs, that I hold very strong. I want to have my say in who operates the public government. The Recorder Deeds office, it seems like it's been three times in the last six years. Every two years, this committee has had to have a public hearing to discuss the recorder, the auditor, or the coroner. The Recorder Deeds office consistently shows that it is one of the best-run offices in the state. And the fact that you have to have a hearing like this every two years is a waste of your time and our time. The Recorder Deeds office is superb here in Champaign County, and we need to all remember that and make sure that people know that. This county, over the last 10 years, has seen extreme growth. And the recorder's office has been able to meet the needs of that growth while operating on a very small budget and continuing to produce revenue for this county. Revenue that this office has generously used to help support the General Corporate Fund, which the county board has seen fit to basically spend and loan to everyone except for the purposes that the General Corporate Fund is intended. I think it's very good to have public input, again, through the elections. We need to make sure that people have their direct say in who runs these offices. Appointments, as we've seen over the past few years, especially at the governor's office, are just ripe for political cronyism and for ineffectiveness and waste. We don't have that when we have someone elected. We may disagree with the policies and the way someone runs an office, and every four years, we can vote that person out of office. And I certainly hope that the public remembers that that's their right as voters, that they can go and say, you know what, you suck at your job, you're out of here. So let's keep doing that every four years and quit having to make Barb Frasca justify her office and her job every two years. Thanks.
Jerry Watson.
Jerry Watson.
Good evening. My name's Jerry Watson and I serve as the Champaign County Farm Bureau President. And tonight, I'd just like to provide you with some of the comments regarding what our organization's feelings towards the issue of elected versus appointed officials in the offices of the Recorder of Deeds, the Coroner and the Auditor. I realize that you're having three separate public hearings. However, I feel the comments that I make will apply to all three offices. First and foremost, the Farm Bureau appreciates the opportunity to address you. And I commend the board for the open discussion that you're having on a number of structural points within the Champaign County government. This type of review is a necessary exercise from time to time and ensures that you, as a body, are meeting the expectation of the citizens of the county and are truly representing them. As some of you may be aware, Farm Bureau is a grassroots organization, one which we are constantly seeking the input of our members. This effort is vital and part of our organization. The Farm Bureau believes that you, as a county board, need to continue to reach out to the residents in your district and seek their input on the important issues like appointment rather than election of county officials. In fact, we support placing this question on the ballot for the three offices of Coroner, Recorder of Deeds and Auditor, as this will allow the voters to provide you with the proper input. From our standpoint, this issue boils down to the openness of government and meeting the needs of the public. Thus, it is good government. We hope that you take into consideration our thoughts and provide this issue the thorough discussion it deserves. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening.
Thank you. Tammy Whacker.
Sir, would you prefer to testify about the Coroner issue?
Okay. Fantastic. I will reserve you your comments for that time. At this time, is there any other public comment regarding the Recorder of Deeds office? Dan? State your name and address so that she can hear it on the record.
Dan McCollum, 409 West Hill, Champaign. I appreciate the opportunity for the county board to again review these three offices. I've always said we can have as much government as we want to pay for. And I think clearly by having additional elective offices, which are essentially non-policy-type positions, is more government than we ought to be paying for. I think the Auditor is essentially handled by professional staff, as it should be. And I think the Coroner, if it's a suspicious death, is handled by the sheriff, the state's attorney or law enforcement. I see the Recorder Deeds as pretty much clerical. Now, what I'd like to emphasize here is that because you have a qualified, excellent person who just happens to be elected, does not mean that the job is appointed. You would not have a qualified person. And again, you'd have the major policy decisions determined by this group right here, the county board, who I think can be safely entrusted with that responsibility. I mean, I think extra offices make it difficult for the public. When you go in to vote and there's a long list of Republican... prospective offices to be voted on, it's confusing. You don't concentrate on the ones that really determine the policy. I think the... Again, I think it's, again, in some cases, a definite waste of money. Obviously, if a professional is handling a job that we have an elected official to do, that that is obviously a duplication of services if indeed those services are in fact performed. The... Probably the partisan politics pay a lot of... Are a major impact on this kind of thing. People can be parked into these jobs as partisan so that they can continue to support a party organization. I don't really think that party organizations are all that effective on a local level. And what I've seen over almost 70 years in Champaign County, I'm not at all impressed that the particular partisan situation that we have here is at all helpful. The... All in all, I think you'd be better off putting this on the ballot. Let it be argued out in public. And how it goes would be what we would have to live with. Thank you.
Anyone else before I close public participation? Public participation is closed. Before we have comments from county board members, I would ask that the county board... Ms. Frasca has done the courtesy of producing this nice piece. I would ask a county board member to move, to place it on file. It's a permanent record of the committee, so the full board will have it available when and if we reach a discussion this year. I'd entertain a motion. Moved by Mr. McGinty, seconded by Mr. Nudo, to place Champaign County Recorder, always working for you, as part of the public record of this hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the same. It's part of the public record of the hearing. If other folks want to submit things in writing to become part of the permanent record of this hearing, they certainly can send that writing to myself, the chairman of the county board, or the county's website. And we will make it a part of the public record at this hearing or the next hearing or at a regular meeting of the Policy and Procedures Committee. Because I know that there are folks that couldn't be here that would still like to weigh in and that we have not closed the possibility of doing that. Now it is time for public comments by county board members if they would wish to share them. Or we could reserve that, go to the Coroner and do it all at once. We are not taking any actions today at this hearing. It's... We don't have action items. Are there comments, folks, on the county board wish to make? Mr. Wyble.
Yeah, I'm commenting a couple of questions for Ms. Frasca. First of all, Ms. Frasca, have you ever been to Egypt?
Pardon me?
Ever been to Egypt?
No, I have not.
I've been to Egypt three different times, mostly traveled on my own. And I can tell you, Egypt's not a good country to compare almost anything with. It's a non-democratic country where anybody with opposing views is suppressed, whether you're liberal or conservative. It also has a very large rapidly-growing population. And one way the government keeps people happy is by giving them jobs. I've seen five-star motels... Five-star hotels, larger than the desert. The whole idea is, we build the hotel, people will come. They're empty. So it's really not a good comparison.
Plus, the sand moves around a lot, so I'm sure it's hard to get...
I do have a question though about... Hold on a second here. I'm a little bit confused about other counties. And it says only one county, DeKalb, has combined coroner clerk recorder. Then on the next page, it says DeKalb and Adams County do. So how many counties actually have combined offices? Are you meant to say DeKalb is only one of that size that has combined?
Correct.
Okay. So how about smaller counties? Less than, what, 50,000?
Well, there's 102 counties altogether. I believe we have 22 pure recorders out of 102 counties. And then, so then you take away the two that DeKalb and, what is it, Adams County? So that's whatever you're left with, 78 counties that have county clerk recorders.
Okay. Presumably, they're all small-population counties?
Yeah. They have to be under 60,000.
60,000, okay, thank you.
Other questions from board members? Barbara.
Barb, you said in your PowerPoint presentation that one of the attributes of your office is that you have incorporated new advancements that quote, "save the county time, manpower and money." Could you give us a specific instance or two where your office has saved money for the county?
Sure. One of the first ones that I can think of is when I first took office, when title companies or attorneys would come in, they would make copies and then they would go over to a little sheet of paper and they would write down how many copies they made. And then at the end of the month, we would bill them. And then I put in a system whereby they had to use a username and password. And our next month's gross was three times what it was the previous month. So that was one of the first ways. The second way was our internet service, which not only does it bring in a user fee, but it also keeps people from coming in and using the county's resources. They're able to work out of their home, work out of their office and do things there that they don't need to come in and use our computers and our paper. So that's probably another one. And thirdly, probably the electronic recording, whereby people don't come in and we have to wait on them at the counter and stand and check their documents one by one. They come in, they're done quickly and they go right back so that someone doesn't have to open the envelope, unfold it, unstaple it, count the number of pages, look for everything that the statutes require, then record it, scan it, microfilm it and mail it back. And another one that we've done is actually the microfilming from the scanned image. That's all done off-site now. We scan all of our images. We go back and second and check them again. And then a company comes in and actually just picks those documents up, makes a microfilm of them and stores the microfilm off-site for us. So those are a few. I could probably think of some others if you'd like.
That's fine. Thank you.
Did you have another question, Barbara?
No.
Any other questions from board members? Mr. McGinty.
Well, I just wanted to address a couple of things before we move on to the Coroner. First of all, Barb, thank you very much. Really appreciate the time. I learned a lot from what you had to say. And it's very helpful. You know, we try to analyze as much as we can as board members. We're all part-time. And so to get this level of detail is very helpful. I know that there were concerns in the audience. I'd like to address those before any of your supporters leave so that everyone can hear. And I'll be brief. I think going on three years ago, Greg Knott and I brought up this 10-point plan. It's what it was called initially. And that was just to analyze ourselves, to do an audit. And that's what we're doing now, still, later. You know, going on three years later. So if anybody's to blame for us being here again, it's probably Greg and I. And that's fine because I think it's healthy discussion. I think that when we ask of the public and ask of our own employees to support spending, taxes, et cetera, that we need to be as reasonable stewards of the public's money as we can and of our resources. We've brought up questions like the number of administrators we have in the county, a number of board members. I'd love to see our own board be smaller. And I'd gladly sacrifice my own seat to see that efficiency happen. We have to do this now because we're asking so much of everyone else. We were fortunate, thanks to the creative thinking of people that work for the county, to avoid furlough days and layoffs this year. And that's... That may well not happen next year. You know, we're talking about 6% cuts across the board perhaps. And that's very worrisome. So if we're not looking at any efficiency that we can find in the county, I don't think that we're doing a good job. This is not about individuals. I've been part of a strategic planning subcommittee for quite a while now. And we take personalities out of it. We look at our corporate structure. We look at how we are as a county. We look at comparable counties. And we try to do intelligent analysis as we do our internal audit. I really appreciate Tom taking the time to try to set a bit of a tone because this is... And I've reached out to Barb and to Dwayne and to Tony and said, "This is not about your job. This is about just trying to look at whatever we can to find things more efficient about running the county." We might be perfectly satisfied doing this analysis and coming back and saying, "Let's keep it the way that it is." If that's what's best and what's best working for the county. So this is the first time, by the way, I've been on now for... Going on five years. And this is the first time we've done an audit on this. And the first time that Barb has presented in this fashion. Again, I very much appreciate it. I just want to make sure that people understand the motives behind this because the motive is to be as good as we can about managing what we're hired to do. So I appreciate the time.
Other concerns by county board members?
One more quick question for Barbara. You stated that recorders must be available to serve on many different panels and committees in order, et cetera, et cetera. Could you state what some of those panels and committees are?
Sure, if I can think of them off the cuff. But I am on the Electronic Recording Commission, which is setting up the laws so that we can start charging transfer tax and P-tax forms for property transfers so that then we can electronically record deeds. We're working with the Department of Revenue on that. I'm also on the committee... Oh, God, my mind just went blank.
It's okay. It happens to all of us.
Let me think a minute.
I've had more senior moments than you.
I don't know. They're coming fast and furious.
You might be having a mini-Betts moment up there.
The other one, I just... I almost had it too.
Suffice it to say, she's working on a committee. It's okay.
I honestly can't think... I've also been asked to give speeches in both Iowa and Indiana regarding our electronic recording system and how we set it up in the state of Illinois. And another thing... I guarantee I'll think of it by the end of the night. I'll give you a call. Leave me your number.
Any other questions before I close this hearing? Seeing none, I'm going to close the hearing and thank Barb Frasca and the folks that came to speak about this issue for coming out tonight. It is deeply appreciated. Thank you very much. Okay. You tell me when you're ready.
Okay, I'm ready. If you're ready to go right into it.
I'm ready to go right into it. Together for our second hearing of the evening. And I would ask that, for one... Once again, for purposes of documentation of the record, that the clerk call the role of members to establish a quorum.
Ammons, Gladney.
Here.
Hunt, Knott. McGinty. Nudo. Schrader. Wyble.
Mr. Wyble? I'm here. Mr. Wyble? Just barely. Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda and any addendum. Moved by Knott, seconded by McGinty. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. There's one aye. Those opposed, do I have it? I am now going to, without further ado, have Mr. Dwayne Northrup come up and do a presentation for us. And I will tell Dwayne that I will do exactly as I did in the other hearing. We'll have the public participation afterwards. And Dwayne, if you have stuff that you want to become part of the record, leave it stacked here and we will move it in to the record as part of the permanent record of the Champaign County Board. That being said, I'm going to turn it over to Dwayne.
Hey, Barb? Barb, are you still here? Hey, Deb, this computer's locked.
Is it dead?
It locked up. She used it. I don't know if you can sign on.
Your presentation's not up on the sign-on, no, right?
No, I'll have to sign.
Gee, that might be it.
It's got a lot of... And the function keys are locked on. I don't know.
It has been in the past. I've been here 14 years. This is my third time going through the years. I've been there before she was recorded.
So this was a --
Hey, Brendan. Hey, Brendan. regarding this question to --
It has been in the past. I've been here 14 years. This is my third time going through the years. I've been there before she was recorded.
So this was a --
Call up the computer, Brian.
How about just a five-minute version? We'll get on with it.
What's this room?
Oh, God, I remember that. He's dead now. David Phillips. Do you remember that?
Yeah.
It was crazy. He was going to be crazy the hell out of my head. Smoking. This was the optimist, the activist.
Optimist.
Mine, before my last week, I skipped it.
Okay.
See, I used to represent a large chunk of the district.
What do you do?
Road and --
I think we're ready. All right. Everybody ready? Finally? All right. We'll go ahead and start. I'd like to put the disclaimer out, though, before I go through this, that when I put this presentation together, it wasn't meant to offend anybody or upset anybody, but unfortunately there may be some information or statements or wording in this presentation I feel is true and accurate, and I felt it was important for the public to know that. So with that being said, we'll carry on. I thought I'd start first. I'm not clear, to be honest with you, if all the board members or committee members actually know what our office does or what our office consists of. So I've put that in here, just a brief rundown. The coroner's office, basically, at full staff, has myself, a chief deputy coroner, two full-time deputy coroners, my full-time secretary, and five to six part-time deputy coroners. Can you hear okay back there? Five to six deputy coroners includes two part-time secretaries that alternate filling in for my full-time secretary. Briefly, I summarize the duties and responsibilities of the coroner's office from the state statutes. Our primary responsibility is to determine the cause and manner of death, and by conducting death investigations into deaths falling within our jurisdiction according to those statutes. We are charged with the responsibility of determining a positive identification of decedents and/or human remains, notifying next of kin whenever a death occurs. That's not only deaths that occur in our county, but deaths that occur in other counties. If the next of kin is in our county, we are frequently notified from a coroner in another county to make a notification to those family members here in person. And likewise, we request that from coroners in other counties if our next of kin is located in that county. We conduct inquests when necessary in the deaths resulting from non-natural causes and other cases within our discretion. We provide cremation authorization permits to funeral directors for all deaths that occur in Champaign County. Any death that occurs inside the limits of Champaign County and the disposition's going to be cremation, the law requires that the funeral director come and get a cremation authorization from the coroner prior to that cremation taking place. We are, by statute, required to take charge of any valuable property, money, or papers belonging to a decedent when they are subject of our investigation. We collect, test, and retain forensic evidence from decedents in criminal cases. We retain it indefinitely according to statutes and other cases in our discretion, and we collect items of evidentiary value from the scene when necessary. We work with interns from local schools, EMS, law enforcement agencies, hospitals, so forth regarding our operations. We collect, compile, and report data to state and federal agencies. We serve or consult on many local and state boards, such as Illinois Child Death Review Teams, Prevent Child Abuse Illinois, Illinois Coroner's Association, and the Long-Term Care Embudsman's Advisory Council. Those are just some examples of the boards and committees that a coroner sits on, as well as myself. I sit on all those currently. We facilitate interaction and continuity between family members, funeral homes, hospitals, nursing homes, universities, research facilities, and so on. Basically, if it has anything to do with death, we usually are involved or consult on it in some form or another. Just an example of that, I had a call from one of our local colleges all about a year ago asking me, they were looking for cadavers, and wanted to know what they needed to do, the local or the usual place they get cadavers from. Wasn't going to be supplying them to colleges anymore, and they wanted to know if they could go down and pick them up from some other place in Illinois and drive them up in the back of the van to the college here. And of course, there were some technical difficulties with that, requiring certain permits and authorizations to get that done, but I was able to get them the proper statutes and requirements so that they were able to proceed with that. We ensure all deaths in Champaign County are registered properly and in a timely manner with the local registrar. No matter what happens, my office knows of or is aware of every death that occurs in Champaign County and has seen the death certificate on every death, regardless of whether it was a case that we investigated or a case that we did not. We provide disposition permits. We used to provide disposition permits to funeral directors after hours. Now it's just the cremation permits that we provide. The coroner acts as a public safety representative for the county, and that's in the form of checks and balances, and I'll get into that later on. We are in charge of coordinating, overseeing morgue operations, recovering, identification of remains, and determining cause and manner of death for victims of mass fatality incidents. Additional duties that I threw on here, indigent cases. Not many people are aware, but we frequently deal with indigent cases in Champaign County. Whenever a person who dies is determined to be indigent, that falls to the county, usually eventually in some form or another, to make sure the final disposition is arranged in that case. We also deal with unclaimed human cremains. It is a state law, whether you're aware of it or not. Some people store cremains in safety deposit boxes or in residences, and when somebody dies and cremains are found, and there's no legal next of kin that anybody can locate, by law now, those are to be turned over to the coroner in the county where the remains are found, and it's the responsibility of the coroner to try and locate next of kin to return those remains. Coroner has to be notified, obviously, on all traumatic deaths. That would include motor vehicle crashes, planes, trains, motorcycles, bicycles, et cetera, shootings, stabbings, hangings, overdoses. These are pretty obvious. The ones you may not realize are the falls or the blunt force injuries, any trauma to someone. It's not required to be a crime, and I think there was some public participation earlier where it mentioned that the sheriff or the police are always involved in a suspicious death. I think it's important to let you realize, a majority of the deaths that the coroner's office investigates or handles is not suspicious. It may not be natural. Most of the time, they are natural. It's just the fact that they don't know that it's natural at that time or what it is. So most of the cases we're involved in on a monthly basis are not suspicious deaths. And like I said, that includes falls, so that could be elderly people, it could be children, it could be any number of things. But if the fall caused an injury, and many times, that's what we're trying to decide, did the fall cause an injury that ultimately caused the death? When to notify the coroner? Any person who is dead on arrival or dies within 24 hours after arriving at a hospital, they're required to notify the coroner's office, and we will do an investigation. So basically, anybody that dies in the ER, again, it may not be suspicious, it could be sudden. We had a 47-year-old that died in a local ER last night. Nothing suspicious about it. The person just never went to the doctor, never had any checkups, had no history to verify. We had to look into it. Turned out, it's still under investigation, but it didn't involve any police involvement, but it was required to be notified to our office. Theoretically, people that young shouldn't die. Now, unfortunately, they do many times, and that's our job to find out what happened. All deaths of children under the age of two who die suddenly or unexpectedly or are found dead. All injuries from falls I covered earlier that cause or contribute to death, and all fractures if a patient dies within a year and a day. A lot of people don't realize if a patient falls, and we see this mostly with the elderly, it could be in a nursing home, it could be home, it could be out in public, it could be anywhere. If this person falls and gets a fracture, they either have surgery or they're not a surgical candidate, they're laid up at home, they're immobile, they're at risk of developing a blood clot, which actually could cause their death. That's not considered natural causes. That actually would be accidental. So we're required to look into those and determine if that death was caused by that fall. A death of any patient who's a resident of a state institution and wards of the state in private care facilities, even if the death is believed to be a natural causes. And again, this falls under that checks and balances. If there's an individual who's a ward of the state, who is under the care of the state or local government in whatever manner, we're required to do an investigation into that death. And we could know it's natural from the start, but we're required to do some sort of investigation to prove that that's a natural death. All stillborn infants, if there's a suspicion of illegal interference, could be drugs and alcohol, could be trauma to the mother that caused the death, we're required to look into. Any death where alcohol or drugs cause or contribute to the death. It's important to single that one out because it's not just overdoses. Anybody that dies of cirrhosis or hepatitis that could be caused by alcohol or drug use, even if it's a history, it doesn't have to be acute, we're required to look into those deaths. We have to file information or report death certificates to the state, who keeps track of those cases that are related to that. All deaths unattended by a licensed physician, including hospice patients who die at home. Basically, that's in the statute as well. Any death that's not attended by a licensed physician, we're required to look into. All nursing home deaths in which a patient has not seen the primary care physician within the last 72 hours, and any death which you may have concerns about. A lot of people aren't aware of that, but we handle a lot of death investigations. As I stated, we know about every death that occurs in Champaign County. We get phone calls frequently. You may not realize, you may have had a death at home, and it may be a hospice patient, but we may get a call in our office the next day from a neighbor that says, "Hey, I saw my neighbor die yesterday, and I've got some concerns that something may have happened. You know, my neighbor's caregiver wasn't very nice to him," or "I saw him do something, raise their hand to him the other day," or yelling at him. So we look into that and make sure there's no concerns about that death. And then, any death in which cremation is the final disposition. If we did not do the investigation on that death, and yet the funeral director's requesting a cremation permit, we require a completed death certificate to be presented to our office before we will authorize that cremation. That way, we have an opportunity to look at that death, see what the physician who was caring for that patient listed as the cause of death, and if we have any concerns, we can actually convert that death certificate to a coroner's certificate and continue the investigation. We can even go do an autopsy, and that's one of the reasons the law's set up that way, is we won't authorize a cremation then until we've had a chance to do an autopsy. Some reasons I put down why the coroner should be elected. Public interest warrants an independent investigation into deaths under the jurisdiction of the coroner. And this is where we get into cases in which an individual has died during an interaction with law enforcement. It could be a struggle, it could be a pursuit, they could be incarcerated in the jail, it could be a physical altercation, or deaths of patients I covered earlier in mental hospitals or any facility overseen by local or state government. Obviously, one of the options we're looking at, of course, or I think the committee's considering, is whether it's a viable option to have the sheriff perform the duties of the coroner. Notwithstanding the fact that that would add a huge caseload to the sheriff's department just on all those natural deaths that would have to be looked into, but I think it would be a huge conflict of interest to have the sheriff's office investigating the deaths that occur in the county jail, or in police pursuit, or in police custody, or whatever it may be. It's actually the coroner's responsibility to look into those deaths and make sure there was no wrongdoing by the departments involved. Other reasons we perform autopsies and death investigations could be because of insurance. Many people have life insurance. I don't know if you've read your life insurance policy lately, but if you haven't, you probably should get it out and read it word for word because there's all kinds of exceptions and omissions or so forth in those autopsy or those life insurance policies that if they can find any way not to pay, they will. I hope there's no life insurance agents in here. But it could be an accidental policy. We have questions all along. Again, this may not be a crime that was committed, but there may be an accidental policy. I get calls all the time from people saying, "Hey, we think this person died of an accident, and we've already looked into it, and it appears to be natural. Why do you think it's accidental?" "Well, I just got the insurance policy out, and it says it'll pay double if it's an accident." Well, it doesn't, you know, that's not the way we operate in the coroner's office, but that's the way sometimes people contact us and would like us to look at it. Many accidental policies will either pay an additional amount or double. Suicide clause. Most life insurance policies, if you've had it less than two years, will not pay out if your death is ruled a suicide. We get the same thing. We have a death that appears to be suicide, we've looked into it, and the family finds out they haven't had the life insurance policy long enough. We start getting calls saying, "Hey, you know, are you sure this wasn't a su-" So basically, anybody that dies in the ER, again, it may not be suspicious, it could be sudden. We had a 47-year-old that died in a local ER last night, nothing suspicious about it, the person just never went to the doctor, never had any checkups, no, had no history to verify, we had to look into it. Turned out, it's still under investigation, but it didn't involve any police involvement, but it was required to be notified to our office. Theoretically, people that young shouldn't die. Now unfortunately, they do many times, and that's our job to find out what happened. All deaths of children under the age of two who die suddenly or unexpectedly or are found dead, all injuries from falls I covered earlier that cause or contribute to death, and all fractures if a patient dies within a year and a day. A lot of people don't realize if a patient falls, and we see this mostly with the elderly, it could be in a nursing home, it could be home, it could be out in public, it could be anywhere, if this person falls and gets a fracture, they either have surgery or they're not a surgical candidate, they're laid up at home, they're immobile, they're at risk of developing a blood clot which actually could cause their death, that's not considered natural causes. That actually would be accidental. So we're required to look into those and determine if that death was caused by that fall. A death of any patient who's a resident of a state institution and wards of the state in private care facilities, even if the death is believed to be a natural causes. And again, this falls into that checks and balances, if there's an individual who's a ward of the state, who is under the care of the state or local government in whatever manner, we're required to do an investigation into that death. And it could, we could know it's natural from the start, but we're, we're required to do some sort of investigation to prove that that's a natural death. All stillborn infants, if there's a suspicion of illegal interference, could be drugs and alcohol, could be trauma to the mother that caused the death, we're required to look into. Any death where alcohol or drugs cause or contribute to the death. It's important to single that one out because it's not just overdoses. Anybody that dies of cirrhosis or hepatitis that could be caused by alcohol or drug use, even if it's a history, it doesn't have to be acute, we're required to look into those deaths, we have to file information or report death certificates to the state who keeps track of those cases that are related to that. All deaths unattended by a licensed physician, including hospice patients who die at home. Basically, that, that's in the statute as well. Any death that's not attended by a licensed physician, we're required to look into. All nursing home deaths in which a patient has not seen the primary care physician within the last 72 hours, and any death which you may have concerns about, a lot of people aren't aware of that, but we handle a lot of death investigations. As I stated, we know about every death that occurs in Champaign County. We get phone calls frequently. You may not realize, you may have had a death at home and it may be a hospice patient, but we may get a call in our office the next day from a neighbor that says, hey, I saw my neighbor died yesterday and I've got some concerns that something may have happened, you know, my, my neighbor's caregiver wasn't very nice to him, or I saw him do something, raised their hand to him the other day, or yelling at him. So we look into that and make sure there's no concerns about that death. And then, any death in which cremation is the final disposition. If we did not do the investigation on that death and yet the funeral director's requesting a cremation permit, we require a completed death certificate to be presented to our office before we will authorize that cremation. That way, we have an opportunity to look at that death, see what the physician who was caring for that patient listed as the cause of death, and if we have any concerns, we can actually convert that death certificate to a coroner's certificate and continue the investigation. We can even go do an autopsy, and that's one of the reasons the law is set up that way, is we won't authorize a cremation then until we've had a chance to do an autopsy. Why, reasons, some reasons I put down why the coroner should be elected. Public interest warrants an independent investigation into deaths under the jurisdiction of the coroner. And this is where we get into cases in which an individual has died during an interaction with law enforcement, it could be a struggle, it could be a pursuit, they could be incarcerated in the jail, it could be a physical altercation, or deaths of patients I covered earlier in mental hospitals, or any facility overseen by local or state government. Obviously, one of the options we're looking at, of course, or I think the committee's considering, is whether it's a viable option to have the sheriff perform the duties of the coroner. Notwithstanding the fact that that would add a huge caseload to the sheriff's department just on all those natural deaths that would have to be looked into, but I think it would be a huge conflict of interest to have the sheriff's office investigating the deaths that occur in the county jail, or in police pursuit, or in police custody, or whatever it may be. It's actually the coroner's responsibility to look into those deaths and make sure there was no wrongdoing by the departments involved. Other reasons we perform autopsies and death investigations could be because of insurance. Many people have life insurance. I don't know if you've read your life insurance policy lately, but if you haven't, you probably should get it out and read it word for word, because there's all kinds of exceptions and omissions or so forth in those autopsy, or those life insurance policies that if they can find any way not to pay, they will. I hope there's no life insurance agents in here. But, it could be an accidental policy. We have questions all along, again, this may not be a, a crime that was committed, but there may be an accidental policy. I get calls all the time from people saying, hey, you know, we think this person died of an accident, and we've already looked into it and it appears to be natural. Why, why do you think it's accidental? Well, I just got the insurance policy out and it says it'll pay double if it's an accident. Well, it doesn't, you know, that's not the way we operate in the coroner's office, but that's the way sometimes people contact us and would like us to look at it. Many accidental policies will either pay an additional amount or double. Suicide clause, most life insurance policies, if you've had it less than two years, will not pay out if your death is ruled a suicide. We get the same thing, we have a death that appears to be suicide, we've looked into it, and the family finds out they haven't had the life insurance policy long enough, we start getting calls saying, hey, you know, are you sure this wasn't a, are you sure this wasn't an accident? Medication clauses, we've run into that before, somebody's overdosed on medication. Many life insurance policies now will state that if you die as a result of medication, either overdose, whether it was intentional or accidental, if they can determine that you are not taking your medication as prescribed, they will not pay out on that life insurance policy. Workman's comp issues, same thing, there's insurance there, anytime there's a death that involves an employer or while somebody's at work, there's going to be questions about whether that person was injured at work and should the employer be covering those expenses. And then, of course, liability insurance with businesses and work-related incidents is also included in there. Manners of death, our primary responsibility besides determining the cause of death is manner. Every death certificate that the coroner's office fills out has to have one of those manners on it. Those are the only options. You either died from accidental causes, suicide, homicide, natural or undetermined. Physicians, anybody outside the coroner's office can only sign a death certificate that says "natural" on it. I asked the question, I've studied this over, I know we're looking at, should we change the elected coroner to an appointed, and, you know, why, or whether there's any benefits? The question I ask, state of Illinois statutes already have requirements for all the elected officials. I looked at the sheriff's requirement, and I believe it may be in the handouts I gave you, or it's further in here, actually, I looked at all of these offices and I've thrown some up here. Near as I can tell, according to Illinois statutes, the sheriff just has to be a citizen of the United States, has to be a resident of the county for one year, and no felony conviction. Is there a reason why we wouldn't want to make more requirements for the sheriff? Why the sheriff shouldn't have a law enforcement background? You know, we're, we're looking at the recorder and coroner and auditor. County treasurer, now, I'm, I'm open to being correct in any of these, unfortunately, these aren't my areas of expertise, so I could only go with what I could find, but near as I could tell, there were no requirements for the county treasurer either, and I think he invests millions of dollars for the county. Now, I could be wrong on that, but, he's required to take this training program after he's elected. But again, why, why do not, why do we not demand more requirements for the treasurer's office as well? State's attorney, I could, I couldn't find it in the state statutes, I could only find it in the Constitution of Illinois, and it looks like the state's attorney is required to be a United States citizen and a licensed attorney. But oddly enough, the state's attorney apparently doesn't have to have any experience in criminal law. So again, I asked the question, you know, if we want to make these requirements for certain offices, why is it not that way for the rest? Again, why? These are the questions I ask when this, these propositions were brought up, and these were the answers I heard, or that I could come up with. And I apologize for the quotes, but I wanted to make sure I got them right, and if anybody disagrees with the quotes, please let me know. But, at the meetings I've been to since this proposition was brought up, I was told, or I surmise it's because we can, that appointment by the county board rather than elected by voters would ensure qualified individuals would be performing these duties, more oversight by the county board, we would achieve better government, there would be a cost savings or efficiency in these offices, or we would make Champaign County government operate similar to other county governments. Under the because we can, under the coroner's statute, it says you can abolish the office by referendum, and the county board then can appoint the sheriff or, or I guess, ask the sheriff to do the job, because it does say if the sheriff agrees. So I'm not sure what we would do under that circumstance if we abolished the coroner and then the sheriff said he didn't want it. I'm not sure if that's ever happened, but apparently he has that option. Make Champaign County government operate similar to other county governments, was a quote by Steve Beckett at that meeting. Five out of 102 counties in, in Illinois currently have a sheriff performing the coroners of, or performing the duties of coroner. These are the five counties here. Of those counties, I have a graph just to show you, or a chart here, whatever you want to call it. Of those five counties, trauma centers, Champaign County is the only county that has a trauma center. Other hospitals in those counties, Champaign County has one other hospital besides the trauma center, Pike County has one hospital. Nursing homes, every, at least every county has at least one nursing home, Pike County has three, Champaign County has, well, I said nine, but I think there's closer to 11 licensed facilities or skilled care facilities. According to the 2000 census was, which was the most recent I could obtain, of course, those are the populations of each of those counties, they totaled that number up there, 41,000. That's the total population of all five of those counties together. Champaign County's 2000 census was just under 180,000. I think there's a huge difference between Champaign County and any other counties where the sheriff is performing the duties of the coroner. And actually, Champaign County's population, I think, is quite a bit higher than that, they, we just won't know for another year or so. I've covered that. Some of those counties I mentioned, Stark County who has a sheriff who acts as the coroner, he has five total employees in the sheriff's department itself, and I got this from the sheriff himself. The chief deputy sheriff is his chief deputy coroner, and he has a funeral director who helps out when needed. The sheriff told me himself, he has a conflict when he works a death scene, and he has to call in another deputy to investigate the incident on the sheriff's department's side while he acts as the coroner. And he, his quote to me was, that, something like that wouldn't work in a county of your size. Calhoun County Sheriff, coroner, hired a funeral director to fill his chief deputy coroner position, that was about all the information I could get out of him from that, I, I didn't think that they really wanted to talk about it too much. Scott County Sheriff, coroner, he is a chief deputy coroner who's a funeral director, he has three deputy coroners, one's a funeral director, one's a deputy sheriff, and he has an ex sheriff who he says he's never used yet, but he's on the list. Pike County Sheriff, coroner, that was the response I got back there. Brown County Sheriff, coroner, that was the response I got back to my questions there. Because we can, in my opinion, does not translate to because it's a good idea. My opinion, appointment by a county board of the coroner, rather than elected by the voters, would not ensure qualified individuals would be performing duties, I guess that's a quote. But, my examples of that are supervisor assessments. Now, maybe not the current supervisor assessments if he's here, because I think he's doing a good job. But, I think we recall what happened in the past, there were certain board members here that probably remember, he was in an appointed position, and that didn't work out so well. The auditor, of course, which I think is one of the other reasons we're here, hasn't worked out as well either, and some of the Republican board members will probably remember, my predecessor Roger Swain, he considered stepping down as coroner before the end of his term, and I know for a fact that county, certain county board members were considering appointing one of the fellow county board members to fill that position as coroner. Myself, coroner, I'm an American Board of Medical Legal Death Investigators, Registered Medical Legal Death Investigator. This is one of the national certifications or registries that recognizes proficiency in this field, has testing requirements as well as minimum hours of work-related experience before you can even qualify to take the test. I've completed 40 to 100 hours of training each year in my office, I'm currently the president of the Illinois Coroner and Medical Examiners Association, which I was elected by fellow coroners for that, I'm chairman of the Champaign Area Child Death Review Team, which I was elected as well for that, and I'm a member of the East Central Illinois Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council, as well as I have a degree in criminal justice, and I was elected three times by the voters of Champaign County to be the coroner, once in a primary and twice in a general election. I may have a biased opinion, but I think the voters of Champaign County did a pretty good, darn good job of electing the coroner myself. Is that laughter of support? Is it? All right. Okay.
Necessary.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. All right. Some of the things I've been involved in, I presented at the 2000 Governors Conference on Aging in Chicago, Illinois. I've gone through the, or I presented, these are all presentations, I guess, at the Advanced Elderly Service Officer Training in Champaign and Kankakee, Illinois. Death and dying class at Parkland I presented for, or before them twice now, criminal justice class at Parkland I've presented to, on the role and responsibilities of the coroner, fire scene investigation for the new firefighters at FSI, U of I Alcohol Awareness Program that they conduct every year, and Illinois Funeral Directors Association, I've been fortunate enough to present for them on, on more than one occasion. More oversight by the county board, I think that could be a problem, the only statute in the coroner's statute really gives the county board, any oversight over the county coroner is over his budget. And this is a statute that states that, that the county board approves the coroner's budget, and the coroner will procure necessary equipment, materials, supplies, etc. Everybody's pretty familiar with that. More oversight by the county board translates to appointed by the county board, unappointed or fired by the county board. Translates to less checks and balances in death investigations in Champaign County, as well as translates to determining cause and manner of death based on budgetary impact and/or political influence rather than circumstances of death. And the reason I put that in there is, if my position was an appointed position in Champaign County, I can tell you for a fact, I've had phone calls on multiple occasions, occasions from political figures, from different levels of, of state and local government, asking questions or requesting if there's any possibility that an autopsy could or couldn't be done, whether an inquest could or couldn't be done, and most of the time I've had to turn those down because the decision's already been made. And we went with the decision we felt was best for the citizens of Champaign County, and not because there was political pressure felt, or because I was in fear of my job. If my position was appointed and I was contacted by anybody who had authority over whether I got reappointed or not, I don't feel like I would have the ability to make those decisions without fear of retribution, retaliation, or losing my job. The coroner's supposed to be independent from all other entities when it involves death investigation. Coroner should be accountable directly to the citizens of Champaign County. County board sets the coroner's budget each year, but the coroner must have freedom to investigate deaths and perform autopsies when necessary without threat of retribution from county board. More oversight by the county board could conflict with in custody deaths during pursuit, during struggles, in police cars, in jail, etc. Nursing home deaths, Champaign County owns its own nursing home. I investigate deaths that occur in that nursing home or deaths that occur, patients that are residents of that nursing home. If the county board has a decision capacity to remove me from my office because they don't like a decision or an investigation I did or the outcome, I don't think I could feel free to, to make those judgments without fear of that happening. And likewise, job-related deaths of county employees, thankfully, I don't think we've had any recently or in a long time, and hopefully we won't. My opinion, less oversight of the coroner by the county board is better service to the citizens of Champaign County. Achieve better, better government, Tom, I'm not sure how to address that. Now on the cost savings and efficiencies, and I've passed out quite a bit of literature tonight, there's a large piece of paper on your desk that is titled at the, at the top, Champaign County Coroner Sheriff Cost Comparison Analysis, and there was a paper that went along with it that said, County Board Options for Coroner ME System, and I just, I'll cover that, just wanted to let you know, deputy sheriffs earn a minimum, so this would be the lowest paid deputy sheriff in the coroner's office, currently earns a minimum of $7,100 more than a deputy coroner earns annually. Deputy sheriff retirement contributions by the county is, I believe, 9.94% higher than a deputy coroner's retirement contribution. We're in a different retirement system. Minimum, it requires, it would require a minimum of two additional deputy sheriffs to cover the workload the coroner and the part-time deputy coroner's do right now. Unlike some of the other offices, my, my position is not purely administrative, I frequently respond to calls and have to cover calls because of the, the minimal staff we have. I think it would be nice if I could be purely administrative, but unfortunately, that's not something that can happen based on the caseload and the volume that we handle. I think it's important to know, deputy coroners are investigators. The deputy coroners in Champaign County and in any other county that I know of in Illinois are specialists, they specialize in death investigation. That's all they do. Unlike the law enforcement positions, police departments, sheriff's department, they handle all kinds of crimes and so forth. All we do is death. I don't get called out when there's a robbery, burglary, an assault, whatever it may be, I don't have to know anything about those, all I have to know is death. How it happens, you know, whether, you know, how to evaluate the, the trauma to someone or the condition their body's in, we do specialize in that. Deputy coroners in Champaign County investigate four to nine deaths in a 24-hour period. Sheriff's investigator detective, in my opinion, is the only position that would even come close to matching a deputy coroner position as far as investigating deaths. Unfortunately, we, as I stated previously, we investigate four to nine deaths in a 24-hour period where the sheriff's department, I mean, we're countywide, sheriff's department doesn't investigate deaths that occur in Champaign, the city of Champaign, city police department does, along with us. So, we might see one investigator from a department maybe twice a year, if we're lucky, that's how many deaths they might be involved in, whereas we're involved in every one of them. Sheriff investigators earn a minimum of $10,889 more than a deputy coroner does in my office. Coroner, deputy coroners, and senior medical secretary are all full-time plus positions. The average time we spend on a death due to natural causes ranges anywhere from two to six hours. So now, if you add that up, we handle roughly between 120 and 140 deaths a month come through our office. If we were to tack that on to the sheriff's department and add two to six hours for each one of those deaths on to their employees, I think you'd see a considerable increase in the cost of completing those death investigations. Of course, those are just naturals. Accidental suicide, homicidal deaths require even more hours and time spent to complete those investigations. And again, I just to stress, suicides and many accidental deaths are not crimes. Many times, the police are not involved, and I think that's important to stress, because again, we think, well, the sheriff's department or the police department's involved in all these suspicious or, or criminal acts that involve deaths, that's minimal compared to the total deaths we encounter. Most of them aren't crimes and don't require or have police involvement. We spend an average time, and this is of course not by my choice, but the county board is, or committees have said on multiple occasions, that it doesn't sound that bad that we have to travel to Bloomington to do our autopsies, but when I have to do an autopsy in Bloomington, it takes a deputy coroner out of my county and out of my usability, so to speak, for a minimum of four hours just for that autopsy. We have our own vehicles, we provide our own removals and, and ensure the chain of custody when we do those removals. When we have private agencies, and we have had private agencies do removals for us in the past, we do jeopardize chain of custody if it is a criminal case. Normally, we wouldn't have that done on a criminal case, but those are your comparison, the last we had a private agency do a removal for our office, it ranged anywhere from 300, 350 to $500 per removal. And approximately 140 cases a year that would be autopsies or may require a removal, that's an additional 50 to $70,000 there that it would cost us to have that done. And I put that in there because again, if we thought we could make the sheriff's office do it, none of the sheriff's employees drive the vehicles that we do. We have full-size vans that we can haul a minimum of two people in, most sheriff's deputies, investigators drive patrol cars or investigator cars, so I suppose they would be looking at private transportation unless they would purchase removal vehicles and do the removals. And I'm not sure how the, the FOP union would, would go along with that under the current In my opinion, and this has been proven over again, and maybe some of my counterparts in the audience could, could agree with this or disagree, but in my opinion, it takes a minimum of two years for a full-time investigator in my office to get to a level where they are competent and proficient to do their job, to where I have no concerns that they know exactly what to do in every situation they encounter, and it's just, it's just a fact. There's no exact training for this kind of job, and when they come in, it takes about two years for them to be at a, a level where they can go out and perform that job on their own, without having to have assistants or have questions. This is just a little information, I think the Will County coroner's here, actually, I hate to throw his, his office in there, but his, Will County discussed this as recently as last year. They looked at whether they should go to a medical examiner rather than their elected coroner. Population is over 600,000, I believe, in Will County as of last year. After going through all the cost increases and the, the gains versus the losses, the Will County board voted to stay with the coroner's system rather than switch to an ME Brendan's here, I think, I think, and I think this is just a lack of understanding just exactly what the deputy coroners do versus medical examiners, the, the quote was, we could train deputy sheriffs to be medical examiners, I think I've already covered that. Medical examiners are actually physicians that are licensed to practice medicine in all branches with special training in forensic pathology. Medical examiner investigators are forensic investigators, they're no different than deputy coroners. The deputy coroners in this state that work for the coroner's office have the same training, if not more, training than investigators from medical examiner's offices would have. I mentioned that American Board of Medical Legal Death Investigators training, that's what a lot of the offices use for their investigators, and we have the same as well as other coroner's offices. We use a forensic pathologist to do our autopsies, the difference is- The difference is, he's not a paid employee of the county. I contract with him on a case-by-case basis. We don't pay his medical malpractice insurance. We don't pay his salary, which, one of your handouts I gave you, I have copies of some relevant medical examiner salaries. That could range at a minimum, and I doubt you could get someone for $140,000, but they're going for more like the $224,000 range right now if we wanted to have a full staff one or one full-time working for the county. Again, these are just different titles for the same people that do the same job. Now, I don't perform the autopsies, but the forensic pathologist rarely if ever goes to the scene. So I do basically everything else the forensic pathologist does in an office if it would be an ME office. I oversee the employees, I oversee the budget, I oversee the investigators in that office. The only difference is, well, I have a chief deputy, so I guess he would assist. But otherwise, you really aren't getting anything different. You're just putting them on a different payroll, in my opinion. I do have one question. I'm not sure how you do it when you switch to a medical examiner from a coroner or vice versa, but Illinois statute, and that's the statute right there, says, "No coroner may perform an autopsy required or authorized by law unless the coroner is a pathologist whose services are requested by the coroner of another county." And the way I read that law is you can't, even if I was a pathologist, I couldn't do my own autopsies for Champaign County. I could do them for another county, but I couldn't do them for my own county. DuPage County, to my knowledge, and I could be wrong about this, but DuPage County is the only county I'm aware of right now who actually, their coroner and they have a full-time pathologist on staff also. But I do know their population's also over 900,000 currently. Make Champaign County government operate similar to other county governments. Champaign County, in my opinion, currently operates similar to most other counties in regards to the coroner's office. Other than Cook County, who does have a medical examiner system, all the other counties in Illinois have a coroner system of death investigation. Why do we need a coroner that functions separately from all their departments? These are just some examples. Tasing incidents, whether it be in the jail, I think we've dealt with that on prior occasions, but that could be a tasing incident out in the public as well. Multiple previous in custody deaths we've encountered in the past. Nursing home deaths. Pandemic outbreaks. Again, if we have a pandemic of some sort where we have multiple fatalities, the coroner's going to have to step in and help process those fatalities through final disposition. That doesn't require any kind of law enforcement involvement. In fact, if we have a pandemic, all the trainings I've been to in local law enforcement, they're going to have their hands tied with security and law enforcement issues, and they're not going to be able to do anything regarding deaths. We have to have independent oversight and investigation of deaths that's in the public interest. We have to have cooperation and coordination with organ procurement organizations. That's another area where, you know, unfortunately, sometimes I have to say no. We have the trauma center here, we have many individuals that come in or kept alive at our local trauma center, and family members or the hospital staff, people want them to be organ donors. There are occasions where I have to turn them down. Now, I will do everything possible to make that happen if I can, but unfortunately, there are occasions when I have to say no. Thankfully, recently, we've had an opportunity where we've allowed three to five individuals to be organ donors, which is actually a high number for Champaign County. But again, how do you ask law enforcement to make those decisions when they're really not trained to do that sort of thing? Cremation permits, again, I won't go into. Toxicology testing. You know, we actually, not every case gets autopsy, but some of those cases get toxicology. We draw those fluids ourselves. I draw blood, urine, vitreous from a body. Do we train every deputy sheriff to do that? If we switch to another office, all my employees are trained to do that and can do that. Mass fatality response planning, again, you know, the sheriff's department, police departments, and the coroner's office all have different job responsibilities in those situations. We need to maintain open government as it pertains to death, and in my opinion, the only way to do that is have an elected official overseeing those death investigations. Again, not to offend anybody, this was given to me, you know, as part of the presentation I was supposed to give tonight, some of the things I was supposed to focus on. That's about all I could come up with for those areas. Again, I looked at that. Other than accountability or financial, I wasn't sure how to address that from a coroner's standpoint. Modernization, again, to me translates to micromanagement and total control over an individual department. How do we autopsy, yes or no? Complete and thorough death, or independent death investigations, yes or no? And looking out for the best interest of the public rather than special interests. And again, that's the end of that PowerPoint. If there's any questions about anything I covered in there. Some of the information I gave you, just to cover some of these handouts. One of them is an article I gave you, it says flood warning up in the corner, but that's just something you printed off, but it says funeral home returns body with bullet holes. That's just an example to give you. I mentioned in the presentation that medical examiners normally don't go to the scene. This is a case where a medical examiner's office didn't send anybody to a scene death. In Illinois, the coroners send somebody to every scene death, and they examine that person at the scene. This body was released by a medical examiner's office and sent to the funeral home. Only after the funeral home embalmed them did they find out that there were two bullet holes in the body. So then they returned it to the medical examiner's office. So again, if we think we're getting better or, you know, a better representation or death investigation by going to a medical examiner or some other form, I would have to beg to differ. One of the other handouts I gave you just basically breaks down the salary, or, I gave you that big one, the big sheet here. These have all the salaries. I gave you the comparisons if it's confusing. I put the coroner's salary at the top. It's, this is the Champaign County Coroner/Sheriff Cost Comparison. I listed in there the differences in the salaries between my employees versus deputy sheriffs. Over to the right, basically, I just theorized, let's say you did decide to make the sheriff the coroner. Obviously, I would think you're going to pay him something for that. Being less than generous, I just gave him an extra $10,000 on his salary, added those up in option A, B, C, D, E, and F, and then each option, if you go down the list, I've switched either from a sheriff sergeant doing that job or a deputy sheriff, and you can see the cost comparisons and the increase in the salaries. So basically, there is no way I can see that you could ever do it any cheaper or more cost-efficient than you get right now. And at the bottom, I had some asterisks just to tell you that the, I didn't factor in any overtime costs. My deputies get overtime for anything over 40 hours in a week. Deputy sheriffs get overtime over eight hours, I believe. We frequently go over eight hours as well. May not go over 40 in a week based on individual employee. And I didn't factor in any IMR, IMRF, or SLEP contributions for the retirement. So just looking at those figures without throwing in those additional costs, you can see it's much more expensive to do it any other way. Two of the other handouts I gave you, one is a McLean County case that defines the coroner's authority. I thought you might find interesting. If you read through that from first page to last, I think you'll find it very interesting where it explains just exactly what the authority of the coroner's office is versus law enforcement and how it differs. And then there's another case, the McCall versus Devine, which I believe is a Cook County case where someone's relative died in police custody in either the Chicago Police Department or the jail, and the family was screaming for independent investigation or that there was a cover-up. And there's some opinions by the appellate court in there of how the fact that the medical examiner sent somebody to the scene as well indicated that they were doing an independent investigation in the public's interest. And that's basically all I have for you tonight. If there's any questions?
This is not the right time. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll turn that over to Tom.
Okay. Before we go to public participation, I would entertain a motion to put in the public record all of the material that the coroner has provided. The chair this evening, most of the members of the board have it. We have the information. Is there a second? Is there a second by Mr. Nudo? And that is this information here, and I've told the coroner if there's anything missing that he can supplement it and just send it to the chair of the board, myself, or Deb Usee, and we would see that it was supplemented into the permanent record of the hearing. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the same motion carries. Now, we have public comment. And bear with me because I am not perfect at pronouncing people's names. Bob Gesner from Kankakee County.
I thought, will I come to the microphone here? Sure. I'm Bob Gesner from Kankakee County and Secretary of the Illinois Coroner's Association. I think Dwayne's presentation today was excellent. I really, all the comments that I had that I was going to talk on, you hit most of them. I think it's very essential that, I posed this question to my sheriff today, and I know what his answer was, no way. I have to fight for, when we have autopsies, that the, get the policeman to come in to view the autopsy. So I think, without keeping you late here tonight, I know that Coroner O'Neill wants to talk too, but I think that that presentation hit the mark, and I'm thoroughly behind, and hopefully that you keep Dwayne here and the coroner's office here. I think it's essential. I think they're doing a great job as he is the president of the association. He's recognized very thoroughly throughout the 102 counties as runs an excellent department here, and my hat's off to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. As Dwayne had pointed out earlier, my name is Patrick O'Neill. I am the Will County coroner. He pointed out in your PowerPoint presentation that our county has approximately 700,000 residents and explored similar, explored similar situations that you're exploring right now. So I thought I would come today and talk a little bit about the job that your coroner's doing and the differences between an appointed versus an elected official and some of the things that Dwayne had stressed about the sheriff being the coroner. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be able to offer my input today at your public forum in reference to having an elected versus an appointed coroner or replacing the coroner with the sheriff. And Dwayne has brought to our attention our association and various corners that are also present here in the room that the county board has expressed need to maintain a conservative plan to lessen the burden to the taxpayers of your county. And this issue during these tough economic times is being discussed in nearly every county and every state that I can think of. But the primary cost differences would remain the same if you appointed a coroner rather than electing your coroner. As Bob had mentioned, Coroner Northrup is well-respected in his field as a medical legal death investigator professional. He has the knowledge and experience and training to perform all the duties that are required with a great deal of integrity and compassion. He was elected coroner by the people of this county on more than one occasion, and the voters felt and expressed their confidence in Coroner Northrup, which they have done, and there is no reason to change this current process. An appointed coroner, no matter what their educational background, really has no idea what we actually do on a daily basis, and I think Dwayne did an excellent job of pointing that out this evening. Many individuals cite what they see on television as a basis for this profession, and we commonly refer to that as the CSI factor. And of course, much of the equipment that you see on those television shows hasn't even been invented yet. As I mentioned before, this job requires a great deal of discretion, a great deal of integrity, and a great deal of compassion. The only way to objectively evaluate the office of coroner is to let the voters decide whether it be Coroner Northrup or somebody else. In reference to having the duties of the coroner replaced by the sheriff, in my opinion, which I'm sure is shared among all my colleagues that are here this evening, would be an extreme disservice to the citizens of Champaign County. Over the past several years, there have been allegations of scandals that have cast doubt upon a multitude of cases that have cost taxpayers millions of dollars. In a county of this size, in a county of Champaign County's size, the coroner needs to be a separate entity that evaluates each case on its own merits. The coroner needs to make an independent ruling on the cause and manner of death without any outside influences. If the sheriff were to perform these duties, the independence of a true checks and balance system would be taken away. In essence, the sheriff would be making a determination based solely on his or her investigation, opening the door for innuendo and allegation. And Dwayne pointed out some of those examples. Death in the county jail, a police-involved shooting, someone being pursued, apprehended, or taken into custody by law enforcement agencies are just three basic examples. The National Academy of Science has recently concluded that moving crime labs out from under the management of law enforcement and make them independent agencies would help to alleviate the rumor, innuendo, and allegations that are often displayed in multimillion-dollar lawsuits being filed today. Having your sheriff wear the hat and perform the role as coroner would only open the door for allegation in many death investigations. Finally, we can appreciate the fact that the county board is looking into ways to save taxpayer money, and you certainly are entitled under Illinois law to maintain a fiscally conservative plan. But to remove an elected coroner with an appointed official to perform exactly the same duties would accomplish nothing. Removing the coroner and replacing him with the sheriff will create the presence of a conflict of interest. Law enforcement and the coroner's office each need to have a separate role in a death investigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Henderson.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here, Mr. Coroner, members of the board. There's never been a better presentation than you observed tonight about the coroner's office. And if you as members of this board cannot make up your mind that the coroner's doing the job and it ought to be the coroner's office, I feel sorry for you. I suggest to each and every one of you, if you're in doubt, go to work with that man for one week. One week. Go to work with him. Find out what his responsibilities are. He had it outlined perfectly for you. You don't know how lucky you are to have a coroner to do this job like that. Thank you, Conley.
I again speak to you in support of keeping this as an elected office. The coroner's office holds a place somewhere near to my heart. My wife was fortunate enough to serve as deputy coroner under Roger Swainy and Dwayne Northrup. She's got a medical background. She thoroughly enjoyed what she did. She considered it the last nice thing she can do for someone. The coroner's office provides an essential service to the citizens of Champaign County. And when Dwayne mentioned that they on occasion will have days where people, there are deputies will have between four and nine death investigations, it reminded me of one night where Stephanie was on call, and between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, she had 14 death calls. She had to go out on several of them. In fact, the night before my brother's wedding, she ended up having to go out on three death calls. So the coroner's office is, it's a 24/7 specialized operation, and the people that are working in the coroner's office should be specialists in only that area. It's interesting to hear the idea of combining the coroner's office into the sheriff's office as a cost-saving measure for the county, when we've seen from Coroner Northrup's presentation that the sheriff's deputies earn a higher salary, they have different work conditions, different union agreements, things like that. I did find one comment that was made this evening by Mr. McGinty, a little troubling. During the recorder's presentation, you mentioned that we're looking at efficiencies because next year's budget, we may be cutting 6%. Efficiencies gained from things such as the recorder's issue or the coroner's issue, we're not going to see those until we're not going to see those until at least 2013. So, don't try to tell us this is going to help us next year. It will not. And if you're forecasting it in 2012 and 2013, we're going to be in as bad of a budget situation as we are now. We have bigger problems. So, remember that when you're considering these issues. But this needs to remain as an elected position for the voters of Champaign County to decide who's the right person that they want being the person doing the last nice thing for you.
Thank you. Eldon Quick.
My name is Eldon Quick. I live at 308 Highland Drive in Ranhtoe, Illinois. I think most of you know I served as coroner here for 10 years and one month, from 1988 to 1998. And I love my work. I enjoyed serving the county, and I'm sure that the coroners that have been in office since that time are likewise feel fortunate to have served the county. And I, too, would recommend that that office be retained as an elected position. The only counties, as has been pointed out here tonight, that have, in Illinois, that have removed the coroner as an elected position and put it in as an appointed are the very small counties, and they do that, and they do save money in most cases. I'm not sure it works as good as the elected coroner, but they do save money because if the statute is the same as it was when I was involved in the coroner's office, there are minimum salaries that coroners have to be paid according to the size of the county. And usually, back when I was involved, it was very, very low compared to what they actually received. But as an example, in Payette County, which is pretty close to us here, they took, had a referendum many years ago, and took the coroner's office out of an elected position, and they appointed what they called a medical examiner. They had a physician in that county that was interested in death investigations, and he was paid per call to go out. And they did save money in that small county, but he had very few calls, two or three a month maybe. And that's an example of how that happens, and I'm sure the other counties, Scott and Pike and these other counties, the same way. Whether it be the sheriff or somebody else, in those counties, they do save money. But with a county this size, with a major trauma center, and with the trauma center having a helicopter that brings cases in here from all over east central Illinois and western Indiana, it is much more than a full-time job. It requires a staff, a professional staff, and I would highly recommend that this not be changed. It can't be changed, of course, unless it's a referendum. And if it does come to a referendum, I will certainly work to try to defeat the referendum. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Charles Vaughn.
Yes, good evening, everybody. I appreciate the opportunity of having a chance to speak to you on a pragmatic level. I'm a practicing funeral director in Champaign, and I've had the opportunity with working with Mr. Quick and Roger Swainy and Mr. Northrup. I'd like to take this down to a level that we haven't maybe thought about tonight, is that there are probably a few of us in this room who will experience or have experienced the death of a loved one at home through hospice. How would you like for that event to be preceded by a police officer or a sheriff's deputy coming to your door at midnight or any time of the day or night with a badge on and saying, "Ma'am, I'm here just to get the facts, just to get the facts"? That's a pretty scary proposition when we have law enforcement or proposing that we have an appointed official being a law enforcement officer. And I'm sure there's no one in our state who would be more pro appointee a law enforcement officer than our friend, I believe, who is now in Will County. His name is Drew Peterson, I believe. Wouldn't he prefer that a coroner be a member of the police or the sheriff or a law enforcement agency? So, there's one terrific conflict of interest among what's happened at our county jails and our sheriff's department investigating those versus an independent, third-party, unbiased, appointed physician, a person who has the training and the qualifications that Dwayne has. The number-one thing that I'm concerned about as a funeral director, not only in being able to be an independent third party and being unbiased and not predisposed to someone who's appointed me, as we have another prominent official in the United States Senate who was appointed recently, we're all very proud of that appointee, I'm sure. Compassion. Do you think a sheriff, a patrol officer with a badge and a gun on his side is going to be greeted warmly by the family and be able to express what, how they feel? So, I would just ask you to look at this from a pragmatic viewpoint, because we're all going sooner or later to be experiencing the death of someone we love very much, and we don't want an official that's been appointed by someone who's been in law enforcement. Thank you very much.
I'm Tammy Whacker. You've been very patient, sitting through both hearings.
That's not my testimony. Don't worry. My name is Tammy Whacker, and I am the Operations Manager and the Regional Ombudsman with the East Central Illinois Area Agency on Aging. As advocates for the residents of long-term care facilities, we strive each and every day for the rights of this sometimes frail and vulnerable population. The long-term care facility is a necessity in any community. Good, hard-working people work in these establishments, providing the needed care for many who require it. But criminal acts can and do occur. During their life in the facility, it is the job of the long-term care ombudsman and the Illinois Department of Public Health to make sure that the appropriate level of care is given to these residents at all times. That is their right. And in the case of their death, whether it is by natural causes or at the hand or negligence of another, it is also their right to have a fair and impartial advocate, making sure that, among other things, their death scene is thoroughly investigated. As near as possible, a date and time of death is determined, and most importantly, in these cases, to determine the manner and cause of death. My agency is responsible for the residents located in the 16 counties of east central Illinois, Champaign being one of them. In Champaign County, there are 11 licensed facilities with 2,147 beds. Recently, you just had a facility of Helia of Urbana with 99 beds close due to the poor and substandard level of care delivery. According to the latest update on the Medicare.gov website, of the eight facilities listed, and Helia of Urbana was one of them, four of those eight were listed, or are listed, as being rated as one-star homes. Of the entire eight, five of the homes fell below the average rating with two or less stars. Now, the main factors to the poor ratings were the cited deficiencies during these health inspections. In the last year alone, homes in Champaign County received seven immediate jeopardy's. This level of tag is given when harm or potential harm to the resident's health or safety has been identified. Each of these tags carries the potential for an unnecessary death of someone that resides right here in your county. The ombudsman program has investigated 239 complaints in Champaign County alone since October 2007. By having your coroner an elected official, this offers that position autonomy and freedom from being controlled by an appointing agency. It allows the coroner to keep in mind who he is answerable to, the citizens of Champaign County, both those who live in their own home and those that live in the long-term care facilities. I also feel compelled to add that your current coroner, Dwayne Northrup, has represented Champaign County at the highest level of professionalism by continuing to investigate any and all nursing home deaths, whether it's by phone, fax, or even in person. Last year alone, Coroner Northrup and his team investigated 372 deaths that occurred in the skilled licensed facilities in Champaign County alone. Regardless of whether someone's in a long-term care facility and they're older, that does not mean that their death is just something that is natural. They deserve the right to have that investigated. He has set the bar for all other coroners throughout the state, and I personally am proud to have him in our area of service. We always are met with the highest level of professionalism. I spoke with Sally Patron. She's the State Long-Term Care Ombudsman, and she wanted me to relay to you that throughout the Illinois Department on Aging, as well as the entire Aging Network, including the state's attorneys with the elderly service officer training, Dwayne Northrup and his staff, they are highly revered and respected because of Coroner Northrup's commitment to serving all residents of Champaign County, including those who reside in long-term care facilities. In fact, it was Coroner Northrup who brought to the Illinois Long-Term Care Council the attention of statewide coverage of death review teams. Now, earlier I spoke about the immediate jeopardy's, but what I haven't even covered is this right here is just a stack of the egregious tags that were filed about the homes in Champaign County, some of them being against the Champaign County nursing home. And so, to have a fair and impartial advocate for the residents of this home is imperative. I urge you to keep this position accountable to the people of Champaign County. It is the strength of that autonomy that will keep the position of the coroner's office, one that will possibly deter unnecessary deaths in long-term care facilities of Champaign. Thank you.
Dan Walsh. Welcome back. I think this is the third time you and I have done this.
It seems that way. My purpose in coming here is only two things. I feel I have to make a little disclaimer because I heard so much about the sheriff's offices, sheriff's deputies, and jails, some of which wasn't all that nice, but anyway. By my presence here, I do not in any way means to say I agree with what was said or disagree. That's not my purpose. My purpose here was to talk about the different things that the coroner does that sheriff's deputies do not do. Excuse me one second. Sorry, unless it's an emergency, I can't talk. Sorry, I really can't shut that thing off, though. I'd love to throw it out some nights.
Coroner. I know the feeling.
Yeah, I bet you do. The coroner does a lot of job functions that the sheriff and sheriff's deputies and law enforcement in general don't do. Dwayne has done a good job of describing what that is, so I don't feel like I have to go back through that. The other thing, as Tom points out, I've discussed this with some of the board members, but some of you folks are new. About five years ago, Vermillion County lost their coroner. I don't recall why, but for a period of about two months, the sheriff of Vermillion County, Illinois, Pat Hartzorn, was tasked with the coroner's duties. He and I have talked about that several times. He reported back to the county board at that time that he did not feel that by combining it, there would be any noticeable cost savings. It was only a two-month experiment, but I just wanted you to know what the feelings were after they tried that. So, those are my only two purposes in being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there, I have no other applicants to speak. With that, I will close public comment and turn it over to county board members for any comments that they wish to make, keeping in mind we can take no action tonight. Mr. Kurtz.
Yeah, I have two things I want to say. At first, I want to take great exception to the gentleman who impugned our sheriff's department by associating our law enforcement people with an alleged murder. I take great exception to that, and our law enforcement departments are trusted to protect and defend our residents, and they do a great job. And I feel an apology is due, our law enforcement people, for you associating our law enforcement people with a killer. I'm sorry I have to say that, but I thought it was way out of order for you to use that as a reference or an association with us. Second, there seems to be a misconception. First, we're not taking any action here. All we're doing is reviewing each of these departments. The misconception is, the misconception is that we want to replace these department heads who are elected with appointed officials. I, for one, have no intention of doing that. I would never vote to turn these departments into political footballs and worry about whether it's going to be a Republican or a Democrat that we appoint because whoever is the majority on the board. This, to me, is not our purpose here tonight. Our purpose here is just to review how we might be able to make some efficiencies. And I certainly don't feel that I would ever vote for a referendum that would replace our elected official with an appointed one.
Other comments from board members? Barbara?
I'm constantly made aware of the fact that yours is a very small office. You've basically got five people going 24/7. And as recently as last Thursday night at the finance meeting, you were asking us to waive the hiring freeze because you have lost two of your five people and wanted to replace them. So, I understand that this is a shoestring operation, and on one level, I think you and probably your predecessors need to be commended for working under those kinds of conditions, when, as you say, there's all those television shows that have state-of-the-art this and staff's as far as the eye can see. But I have to ask, because this is a tough budget time, given how limited your resources are, and knowing that the county board late last year asked departments to make 6% cuts, what were you able to cut under such limited conditions?
I would point out a correction. The request for 6% cuts is right now, for next year's budget, so...
But we've already asked them to make, to hold the line on spending. We've asked them to do...
In February, there were cuts implemented that equaled about 4% for the fiscal year '09 budget.
Okay. So, what 4% cuts were you able to make?
To be honest with you, I'll have to go back and look at my budget to see, because I took it, I believe I took it out of multiple areas in minimal amounts, but I honestly don't recall where I cut it from.
The savings that were achieved in that 4% came substantially from a few departments, not all departments, so I'm not sure that there were 4% cuts adopted for the coroner's department. And so, the savings was also achieved through revenue generation or revenue coming from other funds within the county.
Okay. Then let me ask a follow-up. Anticipating 6% cuts for the '10 budget, again, will your, I mean, do you anticipate there's a place where you can make some cuts?
I haven't made those cuts yet. My intention is to look at whether I can accomplish that through inquest expenses, which I have the option of holding. It's against my better judgment to completely eliminate inquests altogether, but I have jury member fees, court reporting fees for those inquests. And again, I don't think in certain cases that does the public justice not to have an inquest, but to be honest with you... an inquest, but to be honest with you, this isn't an office, I may have to cut 6% this year, but my expenses may go up more than 6% because even though the county has to cut their expenses or were asked to, my vendors, so to speak, which would be my pathologist, the people who provide my toxicology tests, you know, they do not cut their expenses and actually they increase them every year. So while I'm being asked to cut my expenses, all my vendors are raising their fees. So I have limited places in my budget to cut.
Well, let me ask, this is a totally naive question because I don't know all the ins and outs of your office. When somebody asks for an inquest, are there fees that they are expected to pay so that your office will provide an inquest?
No, there's actually not. And no one, I mean, rarely, but occasionally, somebody asks for an inquest, but I do not do inquests because they ask for one. I do them because I feel under the circumstances that the death was involved in, I feel it's necessary. And one example would be deaths in custody or in the county jail. I feel it's important to hold a public inquest and to get all that information out to the public because there's so many people from the public who are screaming that it's a cover-up or there's some sort of police involvement. So I don't do, I never do inquests because somebody asks for an inquest. I do them because I feel they're necessary, either because that information needs to be released publicly or in a public forum. And it also, inquests give family members. If I hold an inquest, I am required to allow family members to testify at that inquest if they request it. So that gives them a public forum to express their concerns or give information about that death that they may feel is necessary before a jury rules on that death.
But they don't pay anything...
No.
...to do that?
No.
Okay. And I just have to ask one more question, just out of sheer curiosity. You mentioned a number of situations where the state pretty much tasks your office with the job of doing things, like cremation permits, and you mentioned notification of family members about a death, and you mentioned collecting evidence, and you had a whole list of things. I was a little surprised in that list that I did not see any charge to a coroner's office when bodies are returned from overseas, particularly in a war situation. Is there no role for the coroner in those cases?
No. Normally, those are handled by, I forget the name of the base, but they're handled by the military. The death certi... Is it Delaware? Yeah. I only have jurisdictional arrests that occur in Champaign County, so even if they're a resident of Champaign County, if it's a military death, the military handles everything. They do the death certificate, they do the cremation permit. I don't actually have authority over that death.
Okay.
They all go through the state of Delaware. There is a base there, and it's designated for that purpose. Mr. Nuda, I can't tell, did you have a question?
Yes, no, I'd like to comment.
Go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very fine presentation.
Thank you.
And the same applies to Ms. Veraska. This is very insightful to get information and decipher what we need to do. I am persuaded by the kinds of things that I see here, the facts, comparisons, those kinds of things that lend to making good decisions on reform and trying to streamline county government. I had a boss a number of years ago, great guy, Dave Webb, some of you may remember Dave Webb, and he had a little black-and-white ball in his, it was half and half, half-black, half-white. And he'd get it out of his desk every once in a while, and he'd say, "You know, most people think these issues are black and white, you know, pro or con, good or bad." And he'd flip it in the air and the thing would turn gray. But most stuff is shades of gray, and it's true. In this case here, I'm not persuaded that every elected position should be voted as an elected position because the public has the final say. I'm not persuaded, as I have clearly indicated in the auditor's position, that unless you have qualifications for an auditor, just like a state's attorney has a legal degree, that that position is best served by an elected person. But having said that, you know, I'm not also persuaded by the accusations that there's a good old boy system in the county board that's going to nominate people in appointed positions. We just recently passed sweeping reform for the county administrator to handle the hirings, to set up the job qualifications on their own, independent of the county board. The same thing holds true for their reviews. I'm not persuaded that these kinds of shenanigans are the kinds of black-and-white issues that people are purporting them to be. I'm also not persuaded that elective positions are as great as they're made out to be. We have had numerous occasions in between elections where a person resigned and the good old boy system took place, where we hired another person within the same party, and it was a springboard for that future election of that person, and it was also a future springboard for another position, so they could get paid and run continually. So, you know, I'm just saying right now that if we want reform, we have to look at things objectively and not say, "This is all bad, elected positions are all good, and we're not going to have change." So I'm persuaded by the things that you presented tonight, and I think you made a great presentation, especially on the efficiency and the cost savings. But I'm holding, I'm reserving my comments for the elected position, particularly tomorrow.
Brendan?
I'll just piggyback a little bit because I know John mentioned the fact that I was a little bit too fiscally concerned maybe before, and that's my job, you know? That's what I have to do. I agree with Alan in that I appreciate the data. It is persuading. And I've said before, and you know it, that this is not about you. I'm confident that you're doing a very good job, and I'm extremely impressed by the quality of the people that you brought in support of what you do. But I'm more interested in the position and how it relates to the organization within, like an organizational development analysis of Champaign County. I don't think it's an unhealthy thing to do. I don't want you taking it personally. I really appreciate the fact, though, that you fight for what you know is right and that you've represented it well tonight. I want to make sure that we, as board members, stay focused on taking the personality out of this, because the names will change and the qualifications of those serving in these positions will change. This is about the organization that best serves the county. It well may be that an elected coroner makes the most sense for Champaign County. Al, I appreciate you correcting the misinterpretation that this is ever about changing elected to appointed, because it's not. I think it's about either keeping it the way that it is, or rolling it into another office, or eliminating it. I think that that's the way it's been presented typically over the course of time. So with that said, I'll turn it over.
Any other questions or comments from committee members? Al? Kurtz?
Not committee.
That's okay.
I'm just waiting for my turn.
You're a member of the board.
Thank, Dwayne, I want to thank you. This was a very insightful, for me, and insightful information from what you do and how you work. And obviously, I don't know when you get any sleep with all these problems that you incur here. The key is, for me, is that we know that because of expenses, your revenues are not even close to the expenses. You're running a deficit, not due to what you do on your budget, but because of the circumstances involved with autopsies and the amount of bodies that, and the amount of deaths that occur here in Champaign and outside of Champaign County that you have to assume. And I don't know how you're going to cut 6%, honestly, with your expenses rising, revenues not coming in. Though I did initiate talks with you and with Administrative UC on how we might form some legislation and put a bill in the House and Senate to help coroners across the state improve their revenue stream. And I'm hoping that we'll be able to put that into legislation for this next session. We've already presented to Representative Jacobson and Senator Farrick's information concerning that legislation. We were just a little late this past year, and I would like to go over that again with you and put that back on the docket for the next session. So I want to thank you for your efforts and work here.
Jan?
Just a comment. I'm not on policy, but I've been on the board since 2000. I remember we looked at structure sometime after I wasn't too long on the board, but I appreciate the presentations, even though I've heard before, I think I always learn something new. And I appreciate your taking the time to put all the materials together. I just wish that we had more people from the public here so they could be more informed about what the offices entail and what you have to do. So just thank you.
I do want to note, Jan, that I called Administrative Services this morning or emailed them and asked them to remind all board members to be there. Everyone should have gotten an email. I know I did, because I really, I wanted to see everyone here. And I'm going to actually ask Administrative Services to remind people again tomorrow, because I think if all 27 members of the board were here to listen to all of these presentations, especially new members who have, you know, some of us, me and Jan and Greg, we've been through this a few times, but again, I think we do learn a great deal each time. And I really wish all 27 people could be here, but when we get the hearing done, we're going to have a very big record, and I am going to encourage everyone to read that record and do follow-up questions. I know they can call your office and call Tony's office and everyone else's office to get additional information, but I will, I think this has been very useful this evening to learn more about the offices, their structure, how they're governed, and their budgets, and their relationship with other offices in the state and the respected hold. So I think it's a useful exercise. It may seem torturous to the office holder, probably does, but it is very, very useful to the board and the public and the media who are here. They are spreading the word and educating the public, because I guarantee you, a huge percentage of the public don't know much other than there is a coroner's office, there is a recorder's office, and when they need it, it's there. But beyond that, they don't know very much. Most board members don't know a huge amount. So I think this is a very useful exercise, and I appreciate you being here. The presentation you made and the recorder made, I think, was very, very useful. Greg?
I just want to say thanks to Dwayne also, and just for the record, I won't be able to attend tomorrow night, but that's why I asked that they do be recorded, so we can look at it later for, maybe we can encourage the other board members to watch the tape or if the county clerk happens to put it online. But, Dwayne, you did a really good job, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Webb?
I'd just like to thank you, Tom, for arranging this and tomorrow's public hearing. Also, I'd like to thank all the people from the county who attended this, and also the people who came from outside the county to come up or come down and come over to attendance meeting.
Drive safely on your way home.
Sure, sir.
It's your, go for it.
I'd like to add to that. I was asked by Tom and Pius and Kat to send out the notice of the hearing to the agencies they thought might be interested, which include the funeral directors and the Coroner's Association. And I just want it to be said that it means a lot to me that some funeral directors showed up, and we're in the presence of two former coroners as well, and the current coroners that showed up. I did not ask anybody to be here tonight. I merely asked our secretary to email out the notice of the meeting. I received many phone calls, and Judith and Tammy from the Central Illinois Area Agency on Aging, but I did want to acknowledge, not only did Will County, Kankakee, Effingham, Edgar Perry Clark, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jeff, Clark, McLean County, Livingston, and Crawford all appeared tonight to support me and on my behalf, as well as one of my former employees and her husband. And I want you to know that means a lot to me, and I sure appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pius?
Are you saying that we have more coroners in this room than we have county board members?
We do, and I hope nothing major happens in the rest of the state.
But we're well-covered. With that being said, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for coming. Please come tomorrow night.